Go ahead, so you're gonna give us the three? You're giving us three proposals?
No, I have more than three.
How many? Well, why don't you tell us what you have to present? Not presented, but what do you have for us today?
Oh, for this, I'll tell you what I'm doing.
Yes, that's it. Yeah, I'd like to start out with that. And then, after you tell us what you're gonna do, then we can decide how we're going to approach our questions, okay?
Excellent.
So just be open to you right now. How many would you have for us? Thank you.
First of all, good morning. And today we are here, the 23rd. And the agenda for today is that I want to give you a status update from the last meeting. And I also want to talk about the directions that we got from the board after the February 2nd meeting. Then we were told to create six plans for the board to review. And we were supposed to create a plan, we call it Plan C, based on radius. And we'll show you what we did with that. And then I'm going to present the plans. And the three plans that we are going to present are called C, D, and E.
Are there a variation on A and B?
They're totally different because your criteria was different.
Okay, so we have six. So we have five.
Yeah.
All right, now, A and B, did you make the adjustments you talked about at the last meeting?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
And provided the numbers.
So, board, now we've got five plans. Any thoughts on how we're gonna address this? Because I'm sure we're gonna have questions.
So I just look at the first one.
Yeah, no, yeah, we look at all five of them first. So make your questions about each plan.
No questions.
And then, well, if we, we may need some clarification. So after we finish the review, then what we'll do is go through the board and we will ask questions about each plan one at a time. So we're not jumping from one to the other. So make sure you put what question, which plan your questions are.
Ma'am Chairman, can I just, I wanna make sure it was clear. Plan C is what you had asked for. Plan D and E are the changes to A and B.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say.
Oh, all right.
The changes were so dramatic that they felt they wanted to name it something different.
All right, well then, why do you think A and B?
Well, they are, they don't have an R and B.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so we're not going back to A and B. So D, is D the old A revised? And E, the old B revised?
You can think of it perfectly located, they are different. So we just call it.
Well, what do you base it on?
We started with that.
And C is the radius.
C is the radius.
Okay. And everybody knows what radius means because I just said it.
All right.
I'll just go over a couple of slides and then I'll actually get into detail of the plans. Like I said, I wanted to give you a status update. Last meeting with the board, we presented the redistricting process and the criteria used in Plan C and D. That was presented at the town hall meetings. Then, the same meeting, we showed some edited versions of Plans A and B. And we provided large-scale map for the website. The edited Plans A and B took into account the human factor, which we got from the comments from the community via town hall meetings, emails, and Facebook comments. We received the updated redistricting criteria and the school wanted six additional plans. Three plans were to be created to address reduced program capacity at Ferry Farm. So, program capacities were changed. And then they were changed to address the free and reduced lunch numbers. And two plans we created using a radius around the schools. Keep in mind, one was for Ferry Farm reduced capacity. So the redistricting criteria that came out the last meeting was that no school should have higher free reduced lunch percentage than the currently highest, which is 53.58. Then the bus rides should be no longer than you currently have. And then there was this radius approach that we were going to try. And we had to make six plans. And the last thing that was that if a school has greater than 30% of or higher of free lunch, then we would have to work with SCS for program capacity. So our bridge worked with the new criteria. We got the updated capacities and we created six plans, which were submitted to SCS SMEs for their review on February 15. We received updated capacity tables on the 4th, on the 12th, 15th, and even until yesterday. So on February 9th, we received some comments from SME meeting. And also that the Ferry Farm reduced capacity plans were put on hold. So we used the radius approach. And it was interesting, the radius approach. We used half a mile and we used a mile, okay? And if you look at the map, you can see the circles, the blue circle, if you can see, was the half a mile as a crow flies. And the green one was a mile as the crow flies. And then we also looked at the crow flies doesn't really help us. So we actually looked at half a mile driving distance and one mile driving distance.
Excuse me, do you have copies into first several slides that you showed up?
I guess I've given them to Matt.
This morning, I received the electronic copies.
Can we get copies now?
Yeah, absolutely.
For today?
Sure, if you need to do that, we can give them.
Yeah, I just wanna see everything in front of me because I'd like to look back to what the criteria was and all that stuff.
Okay, we can try, find a place to copy this. What you, I'll just go into office again. Send it to me, I'll go do it.
I just put a zoomed-in map for the northern part of the county so you can see what I was talking about. We have these circles. While the circle is that big for half a mile, this is just the half a mile driving distance. And then the green is the circle as well as the driving distance. And then this is for the southern part of the county. And primarily, I wanted to show you there's so much overlap. And just wanted to bring that to your attention. Okay, so last time we talked about, you know, if we had a clean slate and we just go with the radius approach, this is how it would look. Stafford would like to have a larger area. And so the colors show what it would be like, how winding Creek. So this is, what we did was, we just went down with a total scope, okay? And I overlaid in braids color your existing boundaries. So we started with this approach. It was good, but we knew that we had to come up with something else, so. But I do want to show you the numbers. If we went with the closest school to every planet unit, this is how it would look.
I don't get fouled.
So, is that what the half mile?
Because this is with the closest. So this is with the closest.
This is what you call a throw-out option.
But, yeah, so we wanted to show that.
Well, I just have her noted that.
Yeah.
But I do want to mention that. So, we, there are some schools, you know, like Brent, you know, seems to be like, okay, quite a couple of different situations. I do want to say that this was a great approach because what happened was, we realized that we cannot just keep going. We knew that from the very outset. But we did what, we kind of experimented and see what things would be like. But.
I don't think it's that funny. I think actually, this is actually something we need to see. There's a reason we needed to see this. But, well, yeah.
But this isn't Plan C, this is just the initial there. And then they squeeze it.
And then they glue it.
Yeah, so this was something that we started with. And we realized that there is something really good in it because we don't want to send too much far out. So what we did was, we tried to send them to the first school. If we can't send them to the first school, then we'll go to the second closest, third closest, fourth closest. So our algorithm in Plan C was, okay, we'll look at the first five schools. And we'll also look at the distance. So this approach was not totally based. We used it. And we said, okay, we're going to kind of apply slightly to that.
So this was, that was the approach from the one mile? Those numbers are based on the one mile? Blue, that's the half a mile?
No. What they are based on, we drew the half a mile. So we made sure that we keep everyone within half a mile. We keep everyone within one mile. And then we said, okay, why don't we just, because some, some kind of units are way out. So we said, why don't we look at the one which is closest? The closest school. So that's how we came up. So, we can't go out. Closest, closest. Okay. So now the rest of the slides, I'm going to just go over this. And you already have the tables in front of you. And then what I'm going to show you is I'm going to jump into the mapping application. So Plan C that we created was based on the radius approach. And we had 3,127 students were affected, okay? And like I said, every planet was, not every planet, I'm sorry. Every planning unit was assigned to the, at least the closest school, if not, when you have up to the very closest. Okay, and we did some distance analysis because every time you worry about is the bus ride going to be longer or whatnot. So we did that. And we have the average distance of Plan C. We have the maximum distance. We have the existing average and the existing maximum. So that you could compare. And if you look at it, it's pretty much what you have right now. So nothing stood out.
Can you keep that up there? Because we don't have it.
We already have these all these slides. Not just ones for preliminary, right?
Yeah, I think we're printing up.
You're printing the whole set? Okay, thank you. It's too hard.
Yeah, this slide you have. This is what you have. And I just wanted to point out here that 19, 20, 19, 20, 20, 20, 21, all the way up to 2023 is that you said that the number should be within 80 and 91. And we have, we feel pretty good about being able to achieve that. And if you look at the numbers, we have as much as possible. We are trying to be competitive within that threshold. And the free and reduced, nothing is more than 53. And wherever we had greater than 30% free lunch, okay? We went and we worked with SCS planning to give us updated program capacities to accommodate for the CSR requirements. And you do have this table, you do have in your map. Now, I have Plan D here. And don't worry about it too much because from this, you know, cannot do it here or we can show you stuff. So we'll go to some, the mapping power to show. So Plan D, we have 3,259 students were affected. And this was based on 2019, 2020 in rural direction. 12 neighborhoods are split. And we have the same distance analysis. And it's kind of matching up with what you currently have. So things won't change. There will be some minor changes, but. Plan D table, similar situation, if you look at it, going from this column, 19, 20, 19, 20, 20, all the way to 2022, 2023, the numbers are pretty good.
Did you say how many students moved under this one? If it did, I just missed it.
3259.
3259, okay, I just didn't get it.
Okay. And the same thing here for free and reduced and 3 percentages. So we were very hard with Matt, who kept giving us updated capacities. So, we made sure that we were like the target there. Then Plan E, which is 3358 students were affected. 11 neighborhoods are split.
C, D, and E, nevermind.
We have the distance analysis here. And you'll get the tables. So, I just put it in there so that you could see it. And, you know, if not now, you could compare the new work on it. And these are the tables for Plan E. Then we also did the area analysis just to make sure, you know, how we compare with the current areas of your attendance area, your elementary school attendance areas.
What do you mean by areas?
Is that square miles? Where is that, square miles?
Yeah, yeah. So your C, D, E, as well as your existing. And it's pretty much, you know, Brent and the Pilkells, Grafton Village. So this is just an analysis that we did. Now I want to say, you know, that we did meet the school board's criteria in all C, D, and E. We made sure that the free and reduced lunch percentage was not greater than 53%, which you currently have. Then bus rides, for bus ride analysis, we did the distance analysis to make sure that no distance is no way out, you know, so they compare to what you have right now. Then capacity utilization, we wanted it to be between 80 and 91. We were pretty close. When you look at the tables, you may say that there are some in 76 and 75. But when you look at a quarter, and you start with 76 and you know it's going to go up, so. And the last thing that I wanted to mention was that we looked at the free lunch percentage. And anytime it was greater than 30, we gave it to Matt, and Matt worked out the best. So that is all I want to talk about. And now I'm going to show you the plans, okay? And I'm going to. I'm going to start with Plan D.
Which one?
D?
D. D. Okay, the old A.
The old A. Now should I start anyway?
I don't want you to talk about it. Just think about it, and A is just the last. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to zoom around the areas and so that you can see how things are. So I'm going to zoom first in the northern part of the county. So we'll start from here. And the red lines are your existing boundaries. So if, should I turn off the meter road? Or is it okay?
It's helpful for me.
Okay, cool. So we have White Water. Then we have Hampton Oaks. It goes across. We have Moncur. Then we have Barrett. And just to, I want to point out that last time, Hampton Oaks, you know, was in more than two, was split. But now it's just split in Park Ridge and Hampton Oaks.
So why would it be split in Park Ridge and Hampton Oaks? If there's enough on Plan C, for example, they all could be in Hampton Oaks. So I have to ask you a question.
Can we hold the questions until we get through the presentation?
I thought I heard questions earlier.
Well.
Okay, sure.
I'm just trying to get through the presentation. If you all want to ask questions as we go along, that's fine with me too. What would you prefer? Want to ask them as we go? Because we've got three.
I've been waiting them down.
Yeah, I'm waiting for these papers because it's, so I need to, we need to have this in front of us. It's really hard with all these numbers to distinguish where the differences are.
I do have one question that's just so I can understand the map. So all the little red lines are old boundaries? Is that right? And the color is the new? You got it. I just want to make sure I understood what I was looking at.
And the little dash lines, they're your neighborhoods. I can tell them off if it comes anywhere.
What's the pleasure of the board? Do you want to ask as we go? Or hold them until we get through?
I think that's a slippery slope. I'd like to get through it. But that's personally me.
Okay, all right. So just write the questions down with which planet goes the long way. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, we have Moncur over here, Barrett, Park Ridge. You can see how Park Ridge has taken some areas to help Windy Creek cut. Then we have Burns. Burns is helping Stafford a little out. And then Windy Creek is coming in. And then Brent is coming in to help Windy Creek. So. And then from Park Ridge, I'm going to Garrisonville. Garrisonville has picked up this area here.
Which one is?
Pink, yeah. Everyone okay with that? So now I'm going on to Rock Hill. Rock Hill has picked up some area from Brent. And now we have Brent. So we'll come down to Brent. So Brent is helping Windy Creek out a little here. And Garrisonville is helping Windy Creek. Remember, it was one of our schools which needed help. So now we go to Hartford. Hartford is. Hartford is helping out.
Working.
Yeah, we have some area which was in Brent's coming down. So Brent, anyway, is still coming over here to help out. Then we have Falmouth, we have Rocky Run. Rocky Run was one of our schools which needed help. So Hartford is helping Rocky Run a little bit. And then we have this area that used to be part of Rocky Run. We have assigned it to Conway. And Falmouth is here. And so Falmouth is, Falmouth had some islands that we took care of. And Falmouth is here. And Conway, Conway comes in. Conway needs to have this part down here. So we assigned it to Ferry Farm. So Ferry Farm went all the way up here. So Conway is taking that. And Grafton Village is helping Stafford. So this area, Stafford and Conway. And then we have this area taken care of that we had talked about, Moncorah Point.
Does this not include all of Brook Road? I can't tell.
Brook Road's blue. It's on one side or the other? Oh, I'm sorry. It includes a little bit of, I mean, from what I can tell, this map is so.
I can't make that.
When, Dr. Kinnon, when the staff come back, I think at some point, we're gonna need individual school district charts for us to look at because this is almost impossible to read. We don't, they don't have to be for now, but we're gonna have to have them for the next. Or we, you know, email boys are coming.
Okay. So, I don't know that all of that. Okay. So, I think we have covered all the schools. And Plan D.
All right, we'll move on to E and let Matt handle it.
Okay. So you have the maps and you saw it here. And I have provided that with like an E-sized graph. So keep the number down. Okay, now I'm going to go to Plan D. And as I go through them, I'll try to highlight the changes. Okay, so we are here with White Water. It's kind of the same as we had with the other plan. Then we have Moncur. Then we have Hampton Oaks. We have Barrett. Barrett is helping out Park Ridge. Okay, and it's also Garrisonville is helping out Barrett a little bit. Okay, so Park Ridge is here. It has every bell. Windy Creek. We have these neighborhoods here.
Can you say what they are? Name some neighborhoods, but not all of them.
Should I name the neighborhood?
Well, you just named, you just said we have.
Okay. And we claim Berkshire. So, we have these neighborhoods in Windy Creek. We have obviously North, which has been assigned to Brent. Then I want to make sure that I covered Burns. So Burns is here. And Burns is helping out a little bit here in the Moncur, Hampton Oaks area. So Hampton Oaks would have both the Hampton Oaks neighborhood and the Slush neighborhoods together. Then we are going to Stafford. Stafford is. Grafton Village is helping Stafford here. So, but we still, it pretty much looks the same as it comes in Plan D. So now I'm coming down to Conway. And Conway is helping Rocky Run and it's taking some from Ferry Farm. And Conway is here. And Ferry Farm is, it used to go all the way up, but Ferry Farm is right here. Okay, now Falmouth. Here we have done some real good things that I'm quite happy about. It's England Run North goes to Falmouth. And we have, what we have done here is that we have, we are not sending it to Brent because we do realize that it's too far. So we are trying to keep them either in Falmouth So we are trying to keep them either in Falmouth, Conway, Rocky Run, or Hartford, which is right there. So... Then Rocky Run is picking up some area here because it came up this and... Hartford. Hartford is here. And we took some areas from Hartford and gave it to Brent. Because Hartford was going down to help Rocky Run. And I think that's all the schools. All good? So I took, as I showed the plans, I do want to show a few things which is that this, I did like this plan because we are addressing a lot of things that we had heard. So it's one of the plans that I like. Okay, now I'm going to show you Plan C, which... Okay. Plan C is based on distance. Okay? So we started with the essential. Wide Water remains the same in all the plans. Okay? So we have Moncur, we have Hampton Oaks. We have Barrett. Windy Creek and, no, Parkridge first, Parkridge. And we have Garrisonville. Garrisonville is taking, is helping Windy Creek a little bit, these two neighborhoods. This neighborhood is still in Brent. Close to Brent. And then we go up here. We are not taking, seeing Plans A and B, what we were trying to do was we are trying to hit the target of eighty-five percent. So here we are not taking anything from these underdewelized schools. We are just leaving them the way they are. And Rockhill is helping Brent. And Garrisonville is helping Windy Creek and Barrett a little bit. But we haven't touched these neighborhoods like we have. Okay? And that's Brent. So now here we have Hartford. The top part of Hartford remains the way it is right now. But we have some changes down here. Okay? And the thing that I like about this plan is that we have been able to keep this neighborhood where I believe there is public transportation stuff. So we have been able to keep it in Rocky Run. And at the same time, we are addressing distances. So we are making sure that nobody is going farther out than they have to. Just because Brent is adjacent to us on me that we are sending them. So here this area, we were pretty happy about. We are sending them either to Rocky Run, Hartford, and Falmouth. And then Conway is coming in to help us now. So this was something that we were quite happy about. We thought it was pretty good, interesting. And the good thing here is that everything is based on distance. And we are not setting this out to like six seconds to a thousand. And then Ferry Farm is the way it is. We took all this area that used to be Ferry Farm. And Raptin Village. Stafford. And Stafford we have. So I've shown you Plans C, D, and E. And now I'm ready to go.
Is Scott giving us the... Is he printing them off first?
I think he's across the street.
Okay. Well, who wants to go first?
I have a quick question about, and this is not for you. This is for Matt. Were the APUs with those large anomalies corrected before these developments?
No, APU numbers have been adjusted. We consulted with the contractor or the consultant who does the projections. And that was before last meeting even. And he felt, he feels confident that the projection model is working as it's intended to be, to be working.
I do want to add, I do want to add to that the same. Last time we were looking at the fourth year. So we were totally dependent on projections. But this time, we're also looking at the fourth year. So it cannot be like you're eighteen, twenty-eighteen is what you have right now, eighteen nineteen. We are looking at nineteen-twenty as well. So if things happen in the fourth year, we are not to worry about it because we are really looking at what's happening as of year four.
I'm still a little bit dumbfounded about how we get sixty-five kids in a community that's not developing or less. And I told you, I said that at the very beginning, so this isn't for you, it's for him.
I want to ask your questions about the plans now? Mr. Kader has questions. Do you want to ask a question about the plans now? Quite many questions about the plans as if we'll present.
I'll give them eventually after that.
Okay.
So I'm going to have a few questions as we move along today. But my first initial glaring question is, is why... My specific area of Wide Water Elementary School is the same in every single plan. It doesn't give me anything to work with or compare. I know that other options could potentially work. We have Brent's Mill still. That's a zone walking to Wide Water Elementary School. And it's still being moved out to Moncur. So I would really just like to see a numerical by APU breakdown of why this in every single plan is the only viable option.
Okay. As you know, Wide Water is at the edge, right? The only planning units that could help Wide Water are in this area. And by the way, Wide Water is projected, it's already quite, it's projected to grow. So it does need help. So there was this, and we have heard this, you know, that Brent Mill is very close. And even though we say that this is one planning unit, which we have over here. But even if we split the planning unit, there are like ninety-nine kids in that planning unit. And even if we split, most of the kids live there. So if Matt wants to address this?
So I think, I think what would really help me and probably many other board members as we continue on with this conversation is to see the map by APU numbers. Because I hear you, but I don't understand most. I'd like to see how many students are in Brent's Mill and how that affects them.
I can put that up right there. This particular planning unit, this particular planning unit, which is, which, you know, which has Brent Mill, I think. Okay? It has, currently it has seventy-two.
Could you zoom in on that planning unit, please? Sure. Because I think most of that is just empty space if I'm looking at it, right? Along Telegraph Road.
You're right about the empty part, but you know what? With all this area of this, this is the planning unit. And I am not supposed to turn on the students, but...
Why is that?
Student point data is sensitive information.
Oh, okay. So it's students, but...
Not, nothing, but the numbers.
The APU numbers are refined.
Yeah, we want to talk about the numbers. We don't need to know the students, but this is, in order for us to review this and do an analysis, we even have the numbers.
If you can show me something that understands, and I don't think anyone wants to cherry pick and do things that are, you know... I just need to understand why this makes the most sense. And I don't.
And also, there's no choices. I mean, I think Mr. Kader makes an excellent point here. I mean, her district is the same in every one of these options. And there's got to be other ways to look at it. And I know the person from Brent's Mill that sent us the emails and the pictures. And you can see the school. I mean, it's like from here to the courthouse.
Yeah. See, the school is there from what I understand, from what I've told, that these kids, it's the back. And if you look at the streets, you know... And regardless, whatever you say, I mean, I understand, you know that. But let me show you the PU. The count, the current count is there are seventy-nine kids in there.
In the entire APU or...
In the entire APU. There are seventy-nine kids right now of nineteen-twenty. Year twenty-nine in four. Right now there are seventy-two. And then they are projected to be seventy now.
And I just want to make sure I'm looking at when the APU, is that the faint blue line that's going down?
Yeah.
Is the APU. So it goes from Wide Water all the way down. So do you have any idea, just general, so those seventy-nine kids, are they on the, in the APU closest to Wide Water or are they further out?
Yes. So that's Telegraph Road, which is why I thought that it was incredibly important for people to be driving these roads.
Right.
Brent's Mill is the neighborhood closest to Wide Water Elementary. The vast majority of the rest of that APU is empty land and a hotel.
What change did you make from the current Wide Water to come up like that? That's what I'd like to see too. What does it look like currently? Before any plans?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
Did you take some?
Yeah.
I mean, Brent's Mill came out of there.
Yeah, it was just this planning unit which was part of Wide Water.
So you took that out? And you didn't add anything else to it?
It can't take any, right? It's already...
No, I mean, what did they take out seventy-nine and then did you balance?
What we could have, what we could do is, but, I mean, I don't know what we can do here because even if we split it, the students will be here. And it's going to go over capacity. That's all. It's just the way Wide Water is.
Okay, well, we're going to have a work session and we can get, we can get down to this.
Yeah, so I guess the last thing I'll say, and then I'll let, I'll let some other people, but my frustration is that we don't have any other options. And I don't have anything that I can look at and see as far as APUs are concerned, number of students. So I just have to go by this and trust that that's the best thing because I can't look at anything. So I'll just leave it at that and we can move on.
Well, if we, in our work session, our next work session, have a list, and this would be from staff, of the districts with the APUs that are in them, is that reasonable? I mean, can that be done in a reasonable fashion? Like if we look, we look at the proposed district in each of these plans, and the district would include the APUs...
That are proposed to be in... Should we currently have that for the Plan A and Plan B original? We can certainly do that for these three plans.
On a chart, I mean, something like this. So we've got, you know, each of the schools would have a list of all the APUs with the numbers.
So attendance zones to APUs, not districts to APUs. Attendance, school attendance zone.
Well, the attendance zone is the APUs, is it not? All the APUs together.
I just heard district, and that's election districts. I just wanted to...
No, I'm talking about the school district. So I'll call it the school district. No, this has nothing to do with election districts.
Yeah, I just wanted to...
We are looking at the schools and the redistricting of the population. And the population of the schools is the APUs. Does that, is that helpful? Is there anything else the board wants to have for the next work session?
I have the same problem. We've got Jamie House with Brook's Mill and Wyndham Hill and Poplar Hills.
Oh, in Stafford.
Yeah, we've got, we've got kind of a natural breakoff point. So you've got Crow's Nest that's, that's south of that. And so we're reaching out and we're cutting out a whole section to send to Rockhill, but we still have the same issue with the bus time, the bus ride. That's, how many, how many kids make up that, that area? Because that, it's just a natural cutoff of the area. I mean, we're going to be sending buses up there just to get a handful of kids that are already in and out. Notice that?
I mean, I know, but Stafford and my children are not in schools that we need to...
Stafford's not one of them.
Stafford is projected growth and Stafford is...
Can you zoom in to the area that we see this?
Yes, we're talking about the book.
Zoom in to that area so we can see. It's impossible for us to really do anything to that.
This is what you have.
Yeah, there's, see that there's a natural line right there. All the rest of that, to the south of that, of that line is all Crow's Nest stuff. So that should have been kind of a natural cutoff now.
It's just Stafford has a lot of stuff.
Well, how many kids are with a larger, older community?
There are sixty-one kids. See, right now there are fifty-eight kids. And projected to be sixty-one in that home. That's a reasonable percentage. But fifty-eight.
I just, I just can't see something.
All right.
Sending kids down, down the road, I mean, when we did their renovation at Raptin, parents were freaking out because they had a, it was jumping through hoops to get their kids from Raptin up to Stafford Temple School. It's the same, but in reverse. So that, that's an issue.
And we will be discussing these issues as a board. But the good thing to do today is to ask the questions while we can get the information from the consultants and we'll be better prepared to have the discussion at the work session. So keep asking the question.
Because the consultant's questions are not going to be addressed two weeks later. So I would like to know what, what if we do to staff representatives to keep those communities right there on the north side at Stafford up?
Well, and we'll be able to have that discussion because at the work session, staff is going to bring us each of these plans with the, with the APUs numbers as shown in these plans. But you're also going to, can you also show us what we did before about what was taken out? I mean, it really helped having the last chart show the areas that were added and the areas that were taken out. So, so we're going to need numbers for those too, and hopefully...
Relative to the existing attendance zone?
Yes, yes. So, so for example, in Wide Water, because they're not a whole bunch, that, that might not be as complicated as some of the other ones. But what came in, what went out, and what is, you know, what is proposed under each of these plans? Because that way, if we're looking at it by the APUs, we can do that. You know, okay, we're going to add fifty, and then we'll have to have somebody here to do the percentages. You know, what impact is it going to have? But, but I think that's something that we'll know because we know the areas.
Right.
And we know the neighborhoods and the driving routes and, you know, what the, what the issues that have been, you know, in this community, even aside from what was, you know, we, in the, in the emails we've gotten.
Got it.
All right, so is there anything else? We'll have more time, but as long as we're given staff direction about what we want for the work session, is there anything else that, that anyone wants for the work session?
I have a quick question. I have a quick question for staff. Did you tell me that the student numbers are private?
No, the student, just individual point locations.
Okay, but we could, we could see...
Certainly, yeah. We have the correct number of students. All in our books have it written by APU.
Okay. So in the information you're going to give us, I would like to know how many students in that APU that are being moved? So you, whatever the number of APU is, number one hundred forty students being moved to wherever, so.
Right.
I would like to see that.
You have, yeah.
Yep. That's, that's what we're asking for.
Yes, ma'am.
We're asking for, you know, what, we need to see what it is today by APU and what it is in the proposal by APU. And then decide what's coming in, what's going out.
I want to see the number of students.
Well, that's what I mean. The APU is the number of students.
The APU is also a number.
Sure. We will say APU one forty-one has forty-five students.
Right, because that's the only way we're going to be able to do it. Right, because that's the only way we're going to be able to do it.
APU is a number, and then there's a number of students, which is different than the APU itself.
Oh, 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 well, I was thinking the APU, I was, excuse me if I have not been clear. I want the number of students, because the APU number isn't going to help us.
Right.
Okay. So we got that. Ms. Hazard, do you have any requests for staff for the work session?
Let's see. In the, in the, whatever, sorry, the presentation, it talked about the program capacity changes that you all were operating under. Can we get a copy of that, I guess? I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sure, I'll be writing quickly. And then there's an updated capacity tables that you all were working with. Those two?
Yeah, yeah, those capacity, updated capacity figures are...
Okay, and then do they, do they change throughout the plans? I think that was what was...
They certainly can, based on the free lunch percentage for each plan. I believe they're all actually the same minus Conway.
I was trying to do that. Okay, so the, so the numbers for the capacity are approximately the same throughout those things?
Approximately, but that's only because of the free lunch percentage.
Right, I know, I understood. So, okay, so that was then to the back.
If I could suggest that, Mr. Chairman, if I could suggest that one board member answered a question, would everybody listen to that question? Because Matt's answering some important information for Ms. Hazard.
Okay, and my question to begin with was, what do we want? What information do we as a board want for the work session that's coming up, so that we can address these issues? So I'm not necessarily, I'm not asking for answers, I'm just asking for what we want. That's information you want, Ms. Hazard, is that...
Yes. The capacity, what we were told is they are listed in each of the plans based on the percentage of free reduced lunch after you ran the plans. They're free. Was that free or free lunch?
Free, always.
For CSR.
That affects the capacity.
Right, okay, but it was thirty percent.
Thirty percent. Free's over thirty percent, that's correct.
So, okay. And then the...
I'm sorry, who was asking a question now?
I had one for the consultant.
Okay, all right, all right, let's try to be orderly, because there's going to be a lot of people that are going to be watching this that want to hear the conversation. So we'll just do one conversation at a time. Ms. Hazard's on deck now, to use a normal term.
Right now, we are asking for really the general questions or items that we would like to see for Monday, correct? Because I have some specific questions.
That we need to see, absolutely.
Okay, so the capacity is contained in there, so that was one of those. Ms. Decatur asked for the list of the APUs with the number on a map. That would be very useful to us as well, because I think that helps us understand how these APUs have been divided, which I think was something we very much wanted, which was great.
And then Harla asked for the number of students within the APUs, that they're tied onto the house.
I think we have that, but it's on the map, so we can understand, to Ms. Decatur's point, of these APUs that are somewhat strangely shaped, to figure out, are they, should they stay in one, this came up very much in the high school one, with the APU looking at Colonial Forge High School, and then the back of it, and it was moving. So it was somewhat to Ms. Decatur's point. So I think an APU map with, I mean, a map with the AP numbers on there would be helpful for all of us to visualize, because I know I'm going to be driving this weekend looking at stuff, because that helps. So I think those are, I think I'm good.
I have a follow-up question to Ms. Decatur. I'm sorry, Ms. Hazard. With respect to this program capacity, I understand when you did these other plans, you adjusted them for program capacity based on the free reduced. But when I look at the program capacity on each of these plans, just looking at it broadly, it appears that the program capacity is the same on each of these plans. So is, where's...
Some of them changed?
One thousand four, nine sixty-six.
Well, there's some schools that there's, a lot of schools, it looks like, there's no change. Okay, so what schools changed in capacity based on the...
The capacity calculations were calculated for each plan from the ground up. So everything was brought back up to full class size, and based on the free lunch percentage for each plan, for each iteration of each plan, it was re-calculated. So it's just coincidental that, I believe they all say the same, except for Conway in Plan C is higher than Conway in Plan D and E. But I believe they're all the same other than that, and that's just a coincidence based on the data.
And you also, I assume, recalculated program capacity at the very beginning with the changes to special ed.
Option three.
So if there's no change in the capacity except for one school, then that must mean that the percentages are about the same as they are now, is that not...
It would indicate that those schools under thirty percent are the same, and those schools above thirty percent, but below forty-five percent are the same across the plan.
So only one school changed in program capacity?
Only one school changed in its, yes, in its CXR category.
Can I pick up on that question? Because this is a question that I have. Is it because we stuck with that fifty-three percent, not to go over that percent, that we are stuck with the numbers being so similar or not moving at all? Should we have done a range and say, we don't want, want it to be over fifty but under sixty kind of thing, to at least have some wiggle room? Because like right now, I feel like we went with like a hard number. We went with fifty-three, and therefore, I think that it seems like the numbers are similar, the outcome is similar because of that. That's probably why the program capacity is not changing. Go ahead.
If you focus on proximity and neighborhood, your free and reduced lunch is not going to change your estimate. I'm just going to, and I think that's what you're being told.
Yeah.
You know, so whatever you choose as a range, if your priority is to try to keep kids closest to their school that they live, in their neighborhood, then I'm just going to share with you that your free and reduced lunch is going to look pretty similar to how you have it today. It would only change if you really want to take kids that are free and reduced lunch, which I hope you wouldn't, and say, well, then put you on a bus and drive you great distances to balance the schools out.
I think I'm already on record saying I'm not going to do that, too. But it is, but it is very interesting.
Yeah.
That under all three plans, there's only one school that changes in program capacity, and overall, that's not a significant change.
Well, but, and it's interesting, because in the last set of plans, that was not the case.
Right.
Okay, so are we round the questions now?
All right, so everybody has, to this point, what you want from staff. When we close up the meeting, we'll go back to the board and say if there's anything else you want from staff for the work session. So anybody else want to add anything to that list?
Just the, just the one thing I mentioned, I whispered, was I think it's helpful to have the neighborhoods added and the neighborhoods subtracted, as we did in the past for the public.
We, um...
Did you already say that?
That when we swept out.
Okay, thank you.
So just a comment on that.
Once you, once you reiterate what we asked for, so we can all be sure, no, no, it's good to make sure that we're on track.
So by school attendance zone, the board would like to see what has changed from the existing attendance zone for each of the three plans, what schools are out, and what schools have been added, I mean, what neighborhoods have been added, and what neighborhoods have changed. That's going to be a very, very time-consuming effort, which, for three plans, and to try and get that for Monday's work session is going to be extremely difficult.
If we have, so these, these maps have the current boundary lines. If we had them blown up by, so I could just take, you know, Widewater, my area, and look at it, I can then see, if we have the APUs and the neighborhoods, I could then see, by looking at the red line, what's in and what's out, if that would help. I don't know if that's acceptable to whoever asked for that, but if the map was blown up and a little bit easier to read, we could very easily see what neighborhoods are in and out of the new zones.
But we also, we also ask for the numbers. Are you saying you don't need the numbers?
I want the numbers.
Numbers, right. If it has the APUs and the neighborhoods, then...
Yeah, I wanted the numbers.
And you don't need, we can deal for us, we can look, but it's just that you can't see it on this map.
Right. So we can certainly provide larger-scale maps, physical, for Monday, I believe.
What about a map of each school district? To me, you know, we will end up with, with one of these for each school, a map for each school, that's readable. Right, and if it has the APUs, the number of students, and the neighborhoods are blown up, then it still has the red line, so you can then look and see what has gone in and out of that red line. Well, but if it's just by, if it's per plan for school, it's not going to have what came out. But I would think the consultant should have that information available. What came in, what came out? You gave it to us on the last one. Is that, is that not readily available? What came in, what went out with each of these plans?
It is available.
Yeah, see?
It is available. We provided it to you for, we can, I don't know. I guess we'll work this night, okay.
I mean, if we need to put off our work session, we can do that, but we need to have this information to be able to have, you know, discussions about it, and to compare the impact.
I agree. Madam Chairman, I'm just saying, you know, I don't believe we can provide it to QC, make sure it's quality data for Monday's work session, for that. I mean, we can get it, we can definitely get it, and we can provide it.
Let him finish, let him finish. I'll go back to you.
So I would hate to give you inaccurate data for your work session, if we rush.
All right, we're, I know if you, if you all need to discuss, it's going to be very hard for people that are watching this, because a lot of people, you know, can't come Saturday morning, and they're going to be planning on watching this session, and we're going to have all these side conversations going on that is very distracting. So if we could repeat that again.
Yes, ma'am. I just know the level of effort, the level of effort that we, that the consultant, and then we QC, we did a quality control to make sure it was accurate data for Plans A and B. To do that, to list the neighborhoods, what was going in and out, was time-consuming. It took time. Even if we worked all day today, and Sunday, and Monday, to get it, it would be difficult to get and quality control it to make sure it was accurate for the work session Monday. I'm not saying we cannot provide it, we can. We definitely can provide it, but it's going to take some time.
But, but we have it. We already have the information, so can we just not? What is it that's going to take so much time, getting it off of the...
We have to go through each plan and list the neighborhoods. Okay, so we can provide blown-up maps for each plan. So each plan, that's seventeen, that's seventeen maps, each school attendance zone, seventeen times three. So that's how many maps, and then multiply it by, if we want to provide one for each school board member. So we can do that. That's the number of copies of eleven and a half by seventeen, or if you want larger, we can provide it. So for you to be able to see that more clearly and just, you know, run your finger down the line and stuff like that. So that, and Monday, we'll be doing it all this weekend. I mean, we can do that. We can do that.
We may have to put off our work session. I mean, we don't want to have a work session that we do not have quality-controlled data, that we will be having discussions and potentially making decisions. Ms. Decatur, I understand what you're saying. We could, we could look at the maps, but for us to have the discussions we need to have, and Ms. Ethan asked some, you know, questions specifically about, you know, how many are here, how many are there, what the impacts are. I think we do need to go down to that next level of numbers, because that's what you were asking about Brensmill. You know, we need to know how many are there, if you want to look at...
Yes, I just want a map with the APUs that I can see, the APUs and the neighborhoods. That's all I want.
So consultant's not available to do that. Hold on, so I just want to, so, and there haven't been individual maps similar to Plans A and B that we provided during the town hall meeting, have not been created, those particular. What we can do is we can take the large maps that we've been, and we can blow them up, and we can print. Staff can do this, and we can print each attendance zone blown up. We can do that.
We don't need them in color. If you're printing them one by one, if we're going to have one for each school, you don't have to...
We understand, we have a good understanding of what the board wants to do with these. So we have to figure out what level of quality that we can get for you by Monday.
Well, we're not necessarily, we don't have to have this on Monday. Again, I think it would be wasting our time, not to mention you all working all weekend, which I appreciate the offer, if we don't have the data to work with. So we may have to reschedule our work session. It was tentative as a follow-up, and it was perhaps a bit optimistic to think we'd be ready to do it on Monday. But perhaps we could have what Ms. Decatur's asking for, is the individual chart, and I don't have any problem with just taking it from here. You know, I mean, that's, if you want to look at what's in there, it's just something we can read. That's what you, you want that, and that shows, do these show the APUs? I can't read them to that extent.
No, it doesn't. And I don't really want to ask, I've said this, and I'm just going to say it more time, and I'm going to be quiet for the rest of the day, but I don't want to ask our staff to do anything more. This is why we are paying someone to do this redistricting.
Well, unfortunately, I think we're beyond our contract of commitment at this point. I see some head shaking. So are there any pain for whatever, whatever we have? Does the board want to put off the work session until we have this information? Ms. McCosker?
You know, so, yeah, we can really, really quick, we can do the hard work, and we can figure out what neighborhoods go in and out. But I think it's, it kind of, this is like, we can do the hard work, but some people want to see their neighborhood, what their neighborhood's either coming in or going out. And that's, this is really thirty, thirty percent us doing the hard work, but really seventy percent like the optics. So I mean, I would, I wouldn't feel comfortable moving forward any further without the neighborhoods being, your neighborhood is leaving, and your neighborhood is staying. And that's just me.
Yeah, I think that, that would probably be...
Ms. Yeo? We're talking about...
I'm still, I'm still not able to ask my questions.
All right, all right, well...
Now, you're asking me to answer something.
Because we're discussing the work session for Monday night, and whether it should be delayed. That's all, that's the only discussion. As soon as we get to the questions, your first, okay?
Okay. I have no courage to respond.
All right, Ms. Decatur? Put the work session off, or...
Again, I don't want to ask our staff to do that.
I mean, I think we have to have, I think we have to have the best data possible, I mean, for all of us to look at. I certainly have questions on these plans, on the current ones, just some, some things. But the bigger picture stuff, I think we need to be able to see. I do, anyway. You all know, I always say I'm a visual. I have to be able to see some of these units, and exactly how far-reaching some of them are, and whether some of them make sense. And I think I would like to get, again, the best data possible, and if we don't believe that we're going to have it on Monday, the last thing I want to do, as we've already slowed down the process, is not then put it in overdrive to be quite sort of an artificial. So I would say I think we should delay it.
What about Thursday? Is that reasonable to have?
It's certainly more than I would, I think...
Is it feasible?
Pretty?
Yes.
To be able to pull those neighborhoods, list them by Thursday noon, so we can, is that, what's your input on that?
For all the plans.
Yes, ma'am.
Why would it be for all the plans if C is not viable? Why are we doing C?
No, C, C was viable.
C is viable.
C is viable.
Yeah.
Then it wasn't viable.
I thought C was the radius.
All right, is the board available on Thursday evening for a work session?
I am.
Ms. Hazard?
Yep.
Ms. Decatur, available on Thursday for work session? Ms. Yeo?
I have to check my calendar. I can't give you that information, but just go ahead and schedule it.
I see, yes, for Ms. Ethan. All right, well, then let's, let's plan on, Missy? Let's plan on noticing a work session for Thursday? We'll cancel the one on Monday at six o'clock? Okay, six o'clock on Thursday. And why don't we do that in the PBC in case we have people coming?
Madam Chairman, do you want the consultant there?
When are you available?
March.
Friday? Also, Thursday's stuck everywhere. I think it would be helpful, because what was the board's thinking?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Are you available Thursday evening?
Twenty eighth.
One time.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, six o'clock, six o'clock is good.
Yeah.
We're the DC, so we, I look at her, and I go, six o'clock.
We're, we're the DC, so, we, I look at her, and I go, six o'clock. Yeah, we're up there loud with the rich folks, where are you living? Boy, their per capita income, they're rich, they're great.
All right, we're getting a little off topic here, are you available Thursday evening?
Yes.
Yes, all right, Thursday, six o'clock, work session.
All right.
Awesome.
All right, and then we'll have this, this information, I mean, I, I, I don't, I know it's a lot of information we're asking for, but I don't think we can really have the discussion we need to have, and the consideration we need to give without it.
Can I, can I just say one thing, though, I, I just want to stress to all of us on this board that when we talk about, okay, could we move this neighborhood, could we move that neighborhood, the work that's been done for the free and reduced lunch numbers, that's going to be a tricky thing to just be saying, okay, now we're going to move this neighborhood or that neighborhood, so just, just cautioning all of us that, that that will be tricky.
Well, unless we're moving some massive neighborhood, I don't think it's going to make that much of a difference. But there may be some neighborhoods that may be a hundred percent, I know we do have some neighborhoods that are a hundred percent, or close to a hundred percent, three weeks, but that's, that's a good, that's a good. All right, Ms. Young has a question, we're going back to questions now on the plans, Ms. Young, you're first.
Are you sure?
Oh, Ms. Young.
What?
All right, don't waste all your time.
Okay, so, the question that I had in the beginning, I noticed that you moved Hampton Oaks, split in Park Ridge, in every single one of these plans, and then you also, I don't know what you did with Winding Creek, I'm still reading it out, you know, while we're having these questions, Winding Creek and Park Ridge, why didn't you, like, what was your criteria when you kind of left, decided to like pull three APUs from one neighborhood into Hampton Oaks, for example, and then move parts of APUs from Hampton Oaks out into Park Ridge? Wasn't there a closer school for the other neighborhood, for example, like, why did you move it that way? What was the, what went into your thought process there?
My thought process is your thought process, trying to figure out how to meet your criteria. Believe me, you know, I have no interest in doing anything to any neighborhood.
If C was keeping the neighborhood together?
Yes, we would like to keep the neighborhood.
So, but you didn't, in that sense, that's why I was asking, like, you didn't even keep that neighborhood together, you split it automatically?
No, let me show you how to do it, we worked so hard in that area.
Sure, show me, you, you worked hard, okay.
Okay, look at this, see, here we are, it's exactly the way you have it now, this is Plan C, and I'll show you Hampton Oaks neighborhood.
So exactly we have it now, I understand, that's not how I meant it to be.
Excuse me, where's, where's the Foxwood Village?
I'll show you.
That's part of Hampton Oaks right now, so I'm just trying to orient myself on this chart. You see the little square up there?
Okay, let me show you, this is where, it's going to show up in green when I click on it, that is your Hampton Oaks neighborhood.
Correct.
Okay, and here what we did was, we kept it off, okay, and these two are in Park Ridge, these two are part of, these two planning units are part of Hampton Oaks, and they are in Park Ridge, but the way it is right now, we have it exactly the way it is, and it's a very tight area.
I understand it's the way it is, but that's not the way how it was prior to the way it is now, so you weren't, you know, part of that redistricting, so the way it is right now is not the way how it was, and not the way how it's supposed to be, because the neighborhood is not together, so, so that's, that's what I was saying.
I, I do want to say that there are eight hundred and thirty-one neighborhoods, now if you want to go in and say you want to keep all of them together, then nothing can be.
I've seen that you kept some together, though, that's my point.
We, we tried to keep a lot of them together, and it's just that this area is so close to there, it's so close to Park Ridge, and it's just a, a big mess.
Could you tell us how many students, you said those two planning units that are purple are part of Hampton Oaks, could you tell us how many students are in those two planning units, please?
Here, this one has thirty-one, and this planning unit has, so together, there are sixty-two.
Sixty-two students.
In what neighborhood do they?
Hampton Oaks.
That's Hampton Oaks.
So, they couldn't stay in Hampton Oaks, I guess?
If you put them in Hampton Oaks, then it's going to, we are going to exceed those requirements where we cannot go over ninety-one percent. And the other thing that we are trying to do is, we are trying to see your Hampton Oaks had holes, so we had this here, and then we had this Foxwood, that's the one that Madam Chairman was talking about.
Because that has several hundred students, right?
Yeah, this one.
And, and where did they, where, where they moved to?
They went to Moncur.
That's where we got the letters from, Hampton Oaks, which I think was very enlightening.
Right, was.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, here, this is a neighborhood.
And is Foxwood?
Uh, Foxwood Village, MHPD, and this is the one right here, and it has a lot of kids.
It used to have two hundred and fifty, I don't know how many has now.
Okay, I, I'll tell you right away.
It's a minimum and a minimum school now.
It has two hundred and forty-five kids, and they used to be in Hampton Oaks, but it's not good, they're going to Moncur, so they should go to Moncur, and that's where we have them.
No, that's, that's a good, we got, we got an email from a teacher at Hampton Oaks that said a lot of those parents walked all the way from there down here.
This is something that I, I've known all along, and this is something that I've pushed to make sure that the kids that are in walking distance to Moncur could go to Moncur, and it opens up a new system.
Is that the case in all three ones?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, the follow-up question to that was, Park Ridge and Winding Creek, did you relieve Winding Creek by moving them to Park Ridge, which is the first closest school to them?
Yes, yes.
Did you tell us what neighborhoods they were?
We have part of Hampton Oaks.
No, we're talking about Winding Creek, I mean, I'm talking about Hampton Oaks, because the two pieces went to Park Ridge, so I'm wondering if she relieved Winding Creek to Park Ridge because it's the closest school.
Yes, so here we have Emory Mill, that we, part of it we moved to Park Ridge, then we have this neighborhood which is Autumn Ridge, yeah, we moved to Park Ridge, and then we have this neighborhood which is Winding Creek, we kept it in Winding Creek, and then we have Berkshire, we kept it in Winding Creek, Amy Clay, we could not keep it in Winding Creek because it has a lot of students to begin with, right now it has fifty-eight students, so Amy Clay and this one, I think this one, are for Glenn, they went to Garrisonville.
Or for Glenn, it's right in that, honestly.
Not just Park Ridge.
Where's on the same side?
It's in the right side.
How far is that, that's way.
That's right there.
Yes.
And we're going to show you around.
Brent's the blue.
I can show you the distance, also we have to distance it, and it's not bad.
But so.
I'm sorry, Amy Clay, Amy Clay.
Those schools that you moved to Garrisonville are close, of course, they're, they're closer to Winding Creek and Park Ridge in Garrisonville.
They are, they are, and I remember we talked about the first five schools that we said, here if we keep these schools, and once again, you know, there are several configurations, if we keep this one, which we could, but then it's like a whole, you move one, then we have to go, and it has all of that.
Where is the new development that's not here yet, that's projected, can you show us where that is on the chart, particularly in the Winding Creek area?
Yeah, I think, Matt, you'll have to help see here, because I'm not finished, I'll show you the first one.
Matt? She's asking the audience for a question.
Here, this is, this is the one I believe where there's going to be something about, if I'm correct, but it's not in our projections right now.
It's not in our projections?
So right in here, there's a question regarding new development.
Yeah, I'm always, in the, in the Winding Creek School District, I want to see where the new development that's projected has been put into this district.
Okay, clear your selection, Priti?
Yeah.
All right, so there's, there is a townhouse development applied for, is here at the Keke Furnace, but that's accounted for in that four to seven year range, we have Liberty, oh, I actually get the Liberty one's confused, but the one that's right here at Winding Creek.
Liberty West.
Liberty Village West. Okay, thank you.
Is it accounted for or not accounted for?
They're accounted for.
Okay, I think.
This is right?
Sure, did you ask what was not accounted for?
Yeah, well, I'm trying to, the things that aren't built, built yet, I'm going to look at the new development coming in, and, and how it's fitting in, because, you know, a lot of comments we get in, you know, I have to move so that the people that aren't even here yet will be in the school.
Which is where the preemptive redistricting conversation comes in.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out, how many, how many students are in this development that's not here yet that are in Winding Creek?
Right.
District, and, and not just Winding Creek, but the other ones, because that's an area that, you know, I know that's going to be busy based on, you know, what, what, from the projections we have. Now, did you have more questions, Ms. Young?
No, thank you.
All right, anybody else?
I have, I have one, at the risk of Scott's within hitting distance of me, so before I ask this, I just would like to say to the, to the board, if you do look on the Stafford County Public Schools website, there is a map of middle school attendance zones, which is, is helpful, I will say, it would be great if it had more streets, but I can pretty much track it here, so I am not going to ask for that, if that is an easy provide, that would be, I think, helpful, because looking at a few of these changes, and how it overlaps with the middle school, I know that the middle school to me is, is sort of like a final overlay, to make sure that we aren't moving kids, that we don't, that we change a, a feeder pattern, like I said, that was not a driving factor, but I think as we start looking at individual units, that is actually something important, so I will say to the board, it is on the main website, I have found it on here, I think we can actually follow, because main roads are on there, but I just would invite anybody, because I've looked at a few in, in my district, and saying, you know, maybe that's a good move, maybe it's not, but just looking at those feeder patterns, as I said, I kind of looked at that as an overlay, but there's a few here that I think we could potentially move, and it would be in the best interest of the students staying in their feeder pattern, so I just wanted to tell them, it is on the, our website, so I'm not asking for an additional map, unless for some reason you have one that's really easy, I wouldn't mind a printout of that one, it's, but I think it's just the one from the website.
How about we just get the printout from the website, and just put in the background materials for the work sessions?
See, I didn't make it too bad, but.
Madam General, I have a question for Jessica Moran.
That's true.
After we make these changes, and we have a plan that we're going to vote on, and we implement, how long is it going to take us to figure out who's in a walking zone, how, are we going to, are we going to be able to do all of this work, carry live, reassigning the walking zones, and notifying families and stuff, are we going to be ready to implement this in August?
Well, specifically on the walking zones, we will not create any new walking zones, you know, there will be a specific, if we, if we look at it, and we see that there's a potential area to create a walking zone, we have to go through a process, there's a, there's a process where we meet with VDOT transportation, we go through this to look at it, the safety aspects of it, so creating a new walking zone is a process, and so we will look at whatever is approved, and if there are candidates for walking zones, we will walk them through the process, so they would not specifically be ready for the next start of the school year, I, I, I almost could say categorically. Now, the impact of existing walking zones, previously, Plan A and B were not impacted, we will look at these plans to see if any walking zones are impacted, but my gut tells me that none will be because of the criteria that's been used, because our walking zone criteria is that these neighborhoods are right next to the school, essentially, right, so, but we will do that, so, to the latter part of your question about taking the end product that the board approves and executing it for next year's school year, now there's a lot of people involved in that.
Let me just tell you, if you stick with the March twenty-third, we will be ready for August, okay? We don't need to wait this day for this, so it's the board, I, I've been pretty clear on that date, and that date was not just randomly selected, that was a date, looking at all of the factors that we need to make sure this is executed properly, so that's what I'm to share with you, that's, that's what the SUCIS is telling you.
All right, and remember, we want to have two public hearings after we have plans to, to present to the public, which we'll have to have in, you know, fairly early to mid-March before here, yes, Dr. J.
So I have a question for the consultant, which is, you made a couple of comments as you went through about, I like this plan a lot, I like, could you, could you give me a little more about what it is? If there's a particular one or two plans that you, for some reason, favor over another, which are they, and why?
Sure, I do like Plan C because I think, I do like Plan C primarily because we feel that we have been able to look at distances and are not just totally relying on adjacency, so that is something that we feel good about, and what I feel good is that we are splitting less neighborhoods, eleven only.
And fewer students, too, right?
And fewer students, the least number of students are being affected, and we feel pretty good about this area that we have done, Falmouth and Conway, and we feel good about that we were able to address the requests of public, use of public transportation, that was important to the program here, then we feel good about that we've been able to address the Marlboro Point area, so we feel good about that we've been able to close all the holes, and we're really focusing on proximity, while we are addressing free and done reduced lunch, but we, our branch is totally basing on it, proximity is important, the kids should go to the closest school they possibly can go to, so, and we feel pretty good about this, and of course, the important thing is that we met all your criteria, so we like Plan C, and I also like Plan E.
And what did you like about Plan E?
Okay, let me open up since I forget, but it's okay, yeah. And for Plan E, we like Plan E primarily because we have been able to keep a lot of neighborhoods together, and once again, pretty much things that we said before, that we are looking at proximity, we are looking at trying to keep neighborhoods as together as possible, and we feel, this is a good plan, especially because here, we have addressed all the islands, and we are not sending, splitting neighborhoods, keeping them as close to where they were, because sometimes, you know, when you look at the distance, when we did the distance analysis, we found that some of the planning units are not going to the closest school, even now, so we try to make adjustments there, and what we are doing here is very scientific and very logical, and especially because we do not have any association or relationship with any neighborhood, so that is the reason why I think Plans C and E are.
Are your best plans. Are your, are your favorite plans.
Yeah, and D, not, there are a few things about D that I would feel, especially we are sending kids from this area south, we are sending them all the way to Brent, so I'm not particularly happy about that, but you know, this is a balancing thing, and I do want to say is that you have eight hundred and thirty-one neighborhoods, and just within eleven of them, I feel it's a pretty good, good job that we did here, and first, when you gave your criteria, we thought it's going to be really hard, because you cannot split the planning units, and I think we've been able to achieve that, and Matt has been very quick, you know, I gave him a plan, he would go, I quickly run the capacity things based on CSR, so I think we've been pretty thorough of these plans.
I just wanted your input, because you've been living this for several weeks. I just wanted your input, because you've been living this for several weeks, and we're just looking at it right now.
I have a follow-up question on that. If you had smaller APUs, would the result be the same in your, in your sense? I don't know if this is a question you could answer.
Well, Matt and I have worked on the planning units a lot, in some places, maybe, but it's kind of hard to say. Some places, yeah, if we had the, if we could, it could have been better, but you have to realize one thing, like in areas, your areas are so tight, and they are so populated in some places, that no matter what you do, like the Brent smell, planning unit, even if we think we would split it, all the students live there. The other thing is just a connecting piece, you know, even if we decide that, okay, you know, these are walkers, we want to split it, but still, white water needs provision. If not this planning unit, it's got to be something else.
Because seventy-two students is almost ten percent of their capacity, right?
Yes.
That's tough, yeah.
Since you've got the map sort of close to where I was, could you pull up the England Run area under anyone? Because that was one area that was kind of where I wanted to go. We could zoom in on it, I'm trying over here, but you can make it a little bigger for me, and I was just trying to compare between the plans, how many elementary schools that the England Run neighborhoods go to under each one. I think I've got it, but I would prefer to defer to, to you.
So this, I believe, is the England Run neighborhood.
Which, which plan do you have up?
I have E.
E, okay, just trying to make sure I'm tracking.
Let me just.
The D is to, is a free.
Okay. So here, this is your England Run North, and if you look at it, then England Run North is just going to Falmouth.
Okay.
Yeah. And this one, these kids in this neighborhood, which is also has the England Run townhomes, but it's a different neighborhood, they're going to Hampton Oaks, which is.
Please.
I'm so sorry. They're going to Hartford before, before they used to go to Brent. So we feel pretty good about that, and then you still have some England Run here, is an England Run apartment, and they are going to.
Stay. So that would be three schools, and then, and the reason I'm, I'm sorry, you know I repeat myself, the middle school overlay on this is somewhat helpful in some of these possible divisions of neighborhoods. When you look at some of the middle school overlay, they do go with this, so I'm just saying to the board, on some of the ones, just double check the middle school feeder, so, and I appreciate you pulling that up. Could you show that under C?
C, yeah.
Do you want to see it, Michelle? We want to see that.
In the aggregate, do you know how many new children are impacted, and how many children in Plans A or B are not impacted now?
I think, I can't remember, but Plan.
Well, Plan C is thirty-one twenty-seven, and Plan E is thirty-three fifty-eight.
Yeah. Yeah. Plan C has the least number.
D is thirty-two fifty-nine.
No, I guess what I'm saying is, children that, that were not initially impacted in Plans A or B, do we know how many now new families who thought they were, that were originally.
They thought they were safe.
Yeah.
Thought they were unaffected.
Yeah.
I think that's going to come, Dr. Kizner, it'll come with the APU moving in or out of a neighborhood.
So you were showing up C.
All right, can we, can we look at August D North?
Oh, we were just going to finish.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were finishing. After this, we'll move up to North.
So here, what we have is, what we have here is the, this, okay, so here, we have England Run North going to Falmouth, to Conway, and nobody lives here, so, yeah, nobody lives here, but this is, they're going to Conway, and this one is going to Falmouth, and August.
All right, any more questions on the England Run? If not, can we go up to August D North? When we met the last time, you had had one of the versions, I think it was B, had August D North going to Brent, and your comment said that you were going to, that was one of the moves that you were proposing, stay in Wyman Creek, so it's not, the subdivision was closer, but I don't see that in, in any of these.
Oh, in this plan.
I think D looks like, very, very similar to what was the old A.
This is where August D North.
And this A or, this C or?
This is C.
This is C.
Yeah. August D North is going to Brent, and this is August D North, the way the neighborhood is.
And how many students do you have now?
Yeah. So we have one planning unit, two planning units, three planning units make up August D North, and altogether, in four, there will be eighty-nine students, and right now, we have sixty-five.
So we have sixty-five now, we're projecting that they're going to increase by fifty percent.
That's, that was my issue in the last work session.
All right, I'm just trying to, because if it weren't, if we didn't have that increase, then it wouldn't be as significant a number. All right, I'm just asking the questions now, but when, when we met before, you, you were talking about putting that back in, leaving it, not putting it back in, but leaving it in Wyman Creek. Is there a reason why that moved?
Okay.
It looks like a carve-out on it. Look at, look at that green, they carved out that section to put it in another color.
Something's got to give from Wyman. Something's got to give, and here, if you look at it, our distance analysis, Wyman Creek is about one point eight miles, and Brent is two.
Two miles.
Two miles, no. And keep in mind, you know, while I'm saying these distances, and immediately you're thinking of driving distance, I want to tell you, because I'm not working with an individual address, I'm working with planning units, so I take the second one as a planning unit. So regardless, you know, for, for this planning unit, you're Wyman Creek is closer, but for this one, and this planning unit, Brent is closer, and we want to keep the whole thing, so Brent is as close as we can. For purposes of a scientific diagnostic.
Now, is for Plan E, is it the same?
Um, I can, I can open up Plan E or X.
All right, so Plan E, we moved some other ones down into Wyman Creek, but not August D North.
August D North.
From the map I have.
Yeah. August D North is like, anytime you're working with more than thirty students, it's going to be a mess. So we think, you know, if it's thirty, is there something which is smaller, thirty, forty, fifty?
Okay, can you show us the E?
Yeah.
See that's moved down the side, yeah? That changed.
Yeah.
See, now it's even more of a carve-out. But that's all right, I'm just making an observation, we'll have our discussions and our work, so, I did, I wanted to know why you didn't do what you said you were going to do at the last time, so I can.
Last time, I think we had August D North, because there were three planning units, so we had split it, but this time, we said, okay, let's try to keep the maximum.
But, but this is different from what you told us at the last one, I just want to make sure I recall it.
Yes, here.
I'm not, you don't have to defend it, it's just an observation.
We did the question.
Observation, yeah. All right, does anybody else have any more questions, or need anything else for the work session?
Thank you.
All right, Scott, and I know you did this earlier, but it's been a long learning already, it doesn't, it's not time-wise, but information-wise, can you, you or Matt, whoever, just give us a list of what you're going to have for us at the next work session on Thursday evening at six, and then if anybody on the school board wants anything in addition, or if you think some of this isn't necessary, we can discuss that, okay? So everybody, pay attention.
Okay, so we are going to have, for each plan, our goal is to have the attendance zone for each school, for each plan, showing the APU that are assigned to that particular attendance zone with the number of students in that APU. We want to try.
I'm going to chime in, we'll, we'll show the four years of the projected students and part of that table, as a student data.
Okay, so, so we'll see what it is the coming school year and throughout.
Twenty-two, yeah.
All right, thank you.
And then we'll show the neighborhoods, the existing neighborhoods in the attendance zone, and then which new neighborhoods are going and which new neighborhoods are leaving.
Excuse me, if we can apply, he's, he's letting us know what they're going to be bringing so that the board can let Mr. Rand know if there's anything else we need, so it's just going to take a few minutes if you don't mind, go ahead.
So again, we'll have a listing of the neighborhoods that were in the existing attendance zone, which is today, and then which new ones are being added and which new ones are leaving, which, neighborhoods are leaving, for each attendance zone, school attendance zone. Now, if the board, if the board is by any chance focusing on one or two, or that, you know, and you wanted to kind of reduce one of the plans and say, don't do this for that particular plan, that would certainly help, but we can do it for all three, it just, you know, the level of effort there.
I'm willing to let go of Plan B, given the consultant's remarks, but I don't know where everybody else is with that.
Well, let's have them go through the list, and then we can have a discussion.
So those are the items, I know that we, we asked, I think we answered Ms. Holly's, Ms. Hazard's capacity on the free, I think, that's available, she made comments on the middle school printout, which, which provide that, and then we talked about the APUs and the schools, we talked about the existing attendance zone and the listing of neighborhoods, so I think, Matt, is there anything I missed? Those are them.
That's what I have as well.
And we will have a separate chart for each school, I mean, it's separate printout.
That's, that's our goal, so effectively, we would have fifty-one maps, where each plan will have seventeen maps times three.
Plus, plus the overall, but I, I think that is the most practical way to look at this.
And as long as the board's okay, we'll do it the same way how we did it for Plans A and B, where the subdivisions to and from which schools will be on the side of those maps. So it'll be kind of ingrained in the same way that you guys have already seen.
Is there anything else that the board wants for the work session?
If we're thinking about, after the plan, can we email everyone?
Well, I, I'd say, we can, why don't we take a little break right now, and we can think, you know, take, let's take ten minutes, if that's all right, take ten minutes, regroup, and then if there's anything you think of, then, this is the time to ask, because I think if we wait until later, it's not fair to staff to expect to be ready, even by Thursday, I'm sure it's going to be pushing this. Okay, so, is there, all right, so what time is it? It's ten forty-six, ten minutes. I always just, let it off, it'll come back in eleven. Did anyone come up with any new questions or information that you want to ask staff to provide for the work session?
I forgot, I was going to say.
Okay. First, Miss Yen, did you come up with anything else?
Somebody else first.
Okay, anybody else?
Nope.
Nope, nope. Did you, Miss Yen, if you have any?
What?
Anything, oh, nobody else has anything additional? I think, well, we, we basically asked them for quite a lot of data and maps that we can read. Dr. Chase had the question, do we want to narrow this down to two plans, which would make it significantly.
Simple.
More doable. Wild Water's the same in all three of them, so I'm good with that. Okay, so narrow it to, where's Ms. Yon, I only have one, so. Ms. Hazard, are you?
I, I wish I could say I know for sure that I want to eliminate one, I mean, I'm trying to study them really quickly and what the differences are, I do appreciate the consultant's overview of them, I'm not trying to do make-work, let me just try and compare them quickly and see if there's a lot of difference, I'm just trying to.
Okay, Ms. Yon, what we're discussing now is whether we want to delete Plan D for consideration for the work session. Now, that doesn't mean we are locked into Plans C and E as they are, because we will be having further discussion of the plans when we have the, the data that's going to be given to us. So it doesn't mean we are locking into either of these plans as is, it just means we're eliminating, you know, one of the three proposals for further discussion and consideration. I mean, if there is a way we can do that, I think that would be, be of all of us, as well as the staff, because it's going to narrow down what our focus is going to be.
That, that means that we're narrowing down, basically, to C or E in a way.
No, to C or E, yes, you're right.
Well, we're narrowing down to consideration of C and E, and for whatever changes we may wish to make, but that means we would not be relooking at Plan D as it's presented to the board today, we would be looking at two, we're not locking into those two.
So, let me just say real quick, so, that's how I've always operated, to try to, you know, kind of get rid of options, so if we don't have these, however, in the past, I will tell you that many, many of you have told me when I, when I suggested that, that, you know, I thought part of the process was to have the public look at these plans online and then come back to us with options, so I would, I would say that maybe Monday night would be a better night to.
I'll second that.
Start skipping options, just, just from what the board has told me in the past, to say, you know.
Thursday night.
Oh, I'm sorry, Thursday night.
I was going to say Monday.
Yeah.
And I, and I agree with Wayne.
So, I mean, that's just my, that's just my.
Yeah, I, I understand that, and the, the public can, of course, weigh in, not just here, but the purpose of the public hearings is to get that final weigh-in for the public. The question is where we're going to go from here, I mean, if we don't eliminate one today, we're going to have to eliminate one on Thursday, or else we won't be able to move forward, but it's going to be, it's going to be some more work to put all this information together. I mean, is there something in, in, what is it, D? Is there something in D that somebody particularly likes?
Well, no, I can't say that, because I haven't, I would like to sit down with the numbers.
Yeah, I, I can say, but then, as I stated earlier, I would like to take time to look at all of them that were presented, regardless if our consultants lean more on two of the other ones, which is C and E, I would like to look at all of them, so I'll say just do the work, and you could start with C and E if you like, and if you have more time to do D, then that's fine, but I would like all three information.
And just speaking for myself, I can't really look at these the way I need to look at them without all this data that we've requested, I need the APUs, I need the students, I need to know who's coming and who's going, so if, if we want to have all three come back to us, we can do that, but I think we need to, to plan on narrowing it down to two, and if not, get to a point where if we, we're not going to be, you know, making any adjustments on Thursday, setting a meeting up for the next week, we may as well go ahead now and schedule it to come up with the plans that we want to present at the public hearing. And who's got, who's got a calendar? Let's see, probably would be a good thing if we can, we're backing up from the, what is it, the twenty-eighth of March?
Right.
All right, so between, between now and the, well, our meeting is on March twenty-sixth, so we're going to have to have at least two work sessions and two public hearings, if not a public hearing, I mean, not another work session.
A town hall or a work session?
Well, we should have, we've, we've always had. Well, we should have, we've always had public, these are not town halls, I mean, town halls are where people ask questions, they get answers. Public hearings is where we sit as the board and we listen to however many people want to come and speak for us about, about the plans. My suggestion is we do one in the north, one in the south, to make it easier for people to get to it. We can set the places where they'll be, you know, at a later date, unless somebody wants to do something in the middle. I expect we'll have, you know, quite, quite a number of speakers.
High school and south.
Yeah, high school and the north, and, well, we got north and south high schools.
Yeah.
Does that sound okay, everybody? North Stafford and South Stafford? Do we, do, when, when do you want to have these? I mean, in March, we've got a meeting on the twelfth, we've got a meeting on the twenty-sixth, which is when we're going to have to be ready to go. So we're going to have to allow time for the two public hearings after we've come up with plans to present to the public. We're meeting on the twenty-eighth, I think it would be perhaps optimistic to think we're going to have all the two plans at night, we might, but if we've got three and we're just narrowing it down to two, I don't, I don't think.
What about March, isn't March nineteenth?
March fifth would be the next week on a Tuesday night, if we do not continue.
Not do it, nope. Not at all.
It'd be a late night.
Fifth isn't a good day for you?
No.
Okay, what about the sixth?
That is not preferable, but I will make.
Seventh, how about, how about if we try to have the public hearings on Thursdays? Are Thursdays generally available?
I mean, Wednesday later that night is Ashville.
Well, we, we can't, we really can't talk about, well, we can talk about it, but we can't, we can't set a date for the public hearings until we have something to present. And I say that again, because I don't agree. I don't think we're going to be ready. I'd love to be ready after the next work session, but if we're going to have three plans come to us, I don't, I don't foresee.
And can I ask, Steph, if you have any of the materials we've asked for ready before Thursday, as you get it ready, pass it on to us so that we can start looking at it? Is that?
You bet.
Okay, great. But actually, the sixth is work, I just.
Well, we're going to, I'm looking at a second work session, a work session, and we understand the consultants won't be here, this will be a board, staff work session.
It's got to be that week.
All right, yes, it has to be that week. It could either be.
Six or seven, it's fine.
Monday, Wednesday, or Thursday, or you're not, is it Monday, Wednesday, or Thursday, the week of March fourth?
Wednesday, Thursday are fine for me. Fine for me?
Okay.
I can make it work.
All right, well, why don't we plan on Thursday, Thursday, the seventh, for our second work session.
There is a student discipline committee that day as well, as long as they.
Yeah, one, I think.
Okay, I may be two, I don't remember. So what time, six, seven?
Six, let's make it six. All right. Six o'clock on the seventh. On the seventh, and the purpose of that meeting will be to identify the two plans that we're going to take to public hearing. All right, so we do that on the seventh, that gives us the week of the eleventh. If we can, we've got a meeting on the, on the twelfth, do we want to do, try to do one or both public hearings that week? Because if we did them both that week, then that would allow us a time of the week of the eighteenth to have a final work session.
Thirteen, fourteen?
Thirteen, fourteen, that sounds, that's Wednesday and Thursday?
Yeah.
For, for the two public hearings?
I would say the fourteenth, one week and early the next week, but that's just my own preference, because I think twelve, thirteen, fourteen is going to be if people aren't available, I don't know, maybe it's just me. I can do it the thirteenth and fourteenth, but it seems like if we do one on the fourteenth, it gives people to. Yeah, but the following week, we present our budget to the board of supervisors on the nineteenth, and we have a fab meeting.
And we need to have a snow day.
And we, and we also need to have a work session that week to follow up on the comments for the public hearing, before it comes back.
Right, so I would, I would reserve the week of the seventeenth for, we have to give up the presentation to the board of supervisors for the budget, but we should make one of those days a makeup in case it snows on the fourteenth, the thirteenth or the fourteenth.
And, and we need a work session?
Correct.
All right, but if, but if we, so, so we don't want, not that I want to meet, but if we did, if we aim for the twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, then we can have that next Monday, perhaps, for the.
But that's the fab meeting, right?
Well, I mean, fab may have to change.
Yep.
This is, this is, at this point, no offense, but this is more than the fab, at this point.
So we're putting the thirteenth, the fourteenth down for public hearings?
Public hearings.
Starting at seven or six? I mean, for people coming home.
Or six-thirty, because. Let's do it at six-thirty, because I'm sure we'll be going on for several hours, people can come in. All right, so you want to do footpoint, north, south? See what's available.
Let us work with the high schools, ma'am, to make sure that they'll, and then if they're not, we can do it in middle school, or, you know, we'll try to do it in our high school.
Well, we want to do it logistically on two ends of the county, so.
Yes, ma'am. They should be able to take care of it.
All right, so, so the, we'll have a meeting on the twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth, we'll have the two public hearings, we'll begin at six-thirty and continue until people, anybody who has wished to address this has done so. Then the makeup day, in case we have a snow day.
Monday.
For those would be, how about Monday, the eighteenth?
Yeah.
All right, then Tuesday, the nineteenth, we do the budget presentation. And then, either Wednesday or Thursday, we should have our work session, because we need to have the work session the week before to give staff time to make any adjustments. They need to adjust before it comes to us for a vote on the twenty-sixth.
So we're looking at, what, the twenty-first for that work session?
Twenty, yeah, probably, is that Thursday, the twenty-first?
Yeah.
And let's plan on that for six o'clock, okay? Whew, we're getting, we need a spring. All right, this is an ambitious schedule, but it's the only way we're going to get it, get it done. Now, why not, why don't we also say, so the eighteenth was our makeup day?
Yeah.
If, God forbid, schools are closed the thirteenth and the fourteenth, let's plan on the eighteenth, either footpoint or colonial boards, somewhere in the middle, and have one.
Correct.
Unless our, does our policy require two? I don't, I don't think it requires any, no.
Well, and if, and if school is closed, but the roads are okay in the evening, we can still have our meeting, right?
Yes, yes. But we'll need to make sure we get that, the message out to people. So, so right now, we've got one scheduled the thirteenth, one scheduled the fourteenth, on two ends of the county. If they both get canceled, we'll reschedule for one on the eighteen, and that'll give us still time to have our, our work session that we planned on the twenty-first.
Where are we going to do the work sessions on the seventh and the twenty-first?
PDC.
PDC?
Yeah, that'll give us, give us boardroom.
That's easy.
Yeah. I think we'll need a place where we have tables so we can spread out, and doing it in our, our boardroom is not really good for having space for looking at all these, all these charts.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
I just have, I just have one question. If it impacted a lot of additional families, are we not going to have a town hall? We're just going right to the.
Well, the town hall is to ask questions. I don't, I think at this point, if people want to ask questions, they can send the questions in, we refer them to you, you can respond to the questions, and every question's being posted on our website, correct?
Correct.
So we need to make sure everybody knows that, so maybe you didn't think of a question, but you want, you know, the answer might be relevant. So as long as that's all posted, I don't, I don't really see the, the timing for a town hall. I think the public hearings are much more important, because that's where we hear from the public. Now, we won't be answering questions, but if there are questions that come up during the public hearing, we can certainly, you know, you can respond to them on the website.
Thank you.
So it needs to be clear that in the public hearings, we are going to be in the listening mode. And if there, if there are any questions that come in, I know I'm, as everyone else is referring, you know, all their, our comments, now that what we won't have is the consultants to, you know, to get these, but I think at this point, you know, after the work session next week, it's, it's going to be in our board.
I just wanted to mention, I just told Scott that our plans have changed, so we are going to be out in the last week of March rather than the beginning.
Well, thank you, thank you. Feel free to join us on any of these events we have planned. Thank you. All right, anything else? Whoo. All right, I think we will dismiss.